Ladies and gentlemen, we call the meeting to order and I'm gonna do the invocation since it was not assigned to either of you and I'm not gonna do that. So I'm gonna do the invocation and then we'll start the meeting. So put all rise for the invocation. Thank you so much. Let us pray. The canon gracious God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to serve man can. We ask you to be with us and stand by us and help us to be appreciative of those things that you do for us every day. We ask that you will please keep our city safe, please keep our staff safe and those first responders who work and save people and help them in all the ways they can. We thank you for our citizens and we ask that we can do your will. These blessings we ask from your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on its own under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all so much for being patient. We had a very long meeting, but that's okay. We're here now. Now we have the clerk who called the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brazington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White. Mayor Protem.
Okay, thank you so much. The minutes of February 24th, 2025. Are there any corrections or if not, then the minutes will stand approved as written? We don't have any special visitors with us today, but we do have a list of people who have signed up to speak individually. I'll call your name if you please state your, give us your name and your address and we appreciate that. First we have Mr. Joe Farmer.
Joe Farmer, 207 Alpine Way. Transportation in the future will look much different than it does today. The horse and buggy faded and so will today's methods. The future is autonomous, electric, robo taxis or cyber cabs. Driverless vehicles that deliver people from point A to point B. Think of it as an Uber, but with no driver and it's an electric. The cost of a personal vehicle is estimated to be at 55 cents per mile. The cost of a self-driving autonomous vehicle is estimated to be 21 to 25 cents per mile. The advantages are of a lower cost, on-demand transport, less need for parking, lower emissions, and lower noise. Now I'm proposing the city investigate getting involved with this because we would get a company that would provide service eliminating or reducing a government-run system. I was prepared to share with you how this would begin in Austin this fall, but this past week, it was announced that they would begin in the spring. This technology is coming and it's coming fast. Technology is moving quickly and AI is pushing it forward rapidly. Each vehicle communicates with all the others and allows a fleet to reposition themselves on demand. These fleets can be geofenced to any specific area. Now we need to be on the front of this technology and encourage company or companies to provide this service. This plan would free up resources that could be redirected to areas outside of the geofenced area. I've been a lot sweaty on this. This is a care, we need to really consider on getting on the front end of this. This is coming whether we do anything or not because here's the stick. If we're not on the front end of it, existing in every current Tesla is software that would allow for full self-driving. With the flip of the switch, it could be turned on today. In the background that no one has seen yet is an app that would allow any Tesla vehicle owner to put their individual car on an Uber-like app so that when they're not using it, it would generate revenue for them. Additionally, they are so far ahead in data collection for this full self-driving. I firmly believe every auto manufacturer is gonna have to lease their software, making all those other autos in the future available for this. So the question is gonna be, would you rather have control of it and deal with some companies and operate it maybe under a taxi system or have a free-for-all? Because I'm afraid if we do nothing, we're gonna get something that we do not like. And if we do something now, it can also help our overall system. It's tough in three minutes. If you'd like to hear more, I'd love to share it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer. Mr. Blickel. Blickel. Is it right? Okay.
Stevie.
Sorry.
You're good. Stevie Blickel, 474 Dallas Road. I'm speaking in opposition of the annexation on Dallas Road. As a concerned resident of the community and also as a mom of three young kids, I'd like to outline a couple of reasons why the rezoning is not in the best interest of our neighborhood or its current residents. Concerns of community safety, the proposed rezoning comes at a time when our area is already facing significant traffic challenges. Dallas Road is a shared road, half of it is state and half of it is county. It's a two-lane road with no sidewalks and in dire need of repair already. With that being said, neither entity seem to wanna claim it when it comes to improvements and no improvements are scheduled to be made at this time. With the absolutely massive Stanley Martin development of over 500 new homes only a couple blocks further down the road, our roads are becoming increasingly congested. Not only are there more cars, but they come down the road at over 60 miles per hour when the speed limit is 25. The current infrastructure is struggling to accommodate the existing traffic and adding more on top of the rest, would not only exacerbate this issue, but could also pose safety risks to everyone, including the 18 children that live within a quarter mile of the land in question. Our neighborhood is home to many families and the increase in traffic from additional developments raises serious safety concerns. The safety of the children is most important and potential for more cars on the road increases the likelihood of accidents. We already have plenty of dead animals on our road and it's just bound to be a human at some point. Many of us chose to live in this area for its privacy and sense of community. The character of our road is defined by low-density residential layout. We have eight acres, our neighbors have four, so on and so on, and transitioning to neighborhood zoning could undermine this character. We're committing to preserving the quality of life that drew us to the area, which was privacy, and raising our children to be able to run around and have the carefree childhood that living on land allows. Long-term community commitment. It's important to note that most residents, including myself, moved to this area with the intention of making it our lifelong home. We're not worried about resale value, we're just trying to maintain our peace and way of life. We're invested in the well-being of our community and believe that changes to zoning should reflect the interests and needs of the current residents rather than catering to more short-term development goals. We personally have made several fair market cash offers to buy the land as a buffer without success. A while back, the owner decided he wanted to build a small neighborhood on the four acres and started the process, clearing trees and making us realize just how close the property line was. With little to no land left in Greenville, we thought this would be a safe haven, but now feel as though we're just a part of another neighborhood. I'm by no means against development and I've never opposed the 87-plus acres that Stanley Martin developed directly behind us and I understand there might be a couple houses next to us, which is fine, but why is this little out-of-place addition necessary and one is enough enough? Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Logan. Mr. Logan.
Good afternoon. My name is Jack Logan. I live at 5051 Old Augusta Road in Greenville County, Interstate of South Carolina. This is DeQuan McGowan. He's a member of our Put Down the Guns Now Young People Organization. Within the last three weeks, we've had seven people shot in the city of Greenville, one death. We could have had seven homicides. I come tonight after speaking to the chief earlier today, there's some criticism on the streets about the police department. I'm here to defend law enforcement because we're out early in the mornings by Jailman High School doing what we do to educate children and teens not to pick up guns, also around that Jamestown and Berkeley Apartments, also around the Olive Garden and as well as Green Ridge where the shooting occurred, where the gentleman, according to media, say, took his own life. It is sad in knowing that the two people that were shot, one that was shot at Berkeley and Jamestown Apartments, they don't wanna cooperate with law enforcement. We need a city ordinance or a statute in law because I feel that those two people had to be condoning some type of criminal activity to not wanting to cooperate with law enforcement. And because there's Jailman High School out there, there's Christ Church High School, St. Joseph High School, and sometimes during those hours, those kids be out running and the person who, I'm thinking that may have done the crime at Jamestown, drove on over to Berkeley and done that crime as well. And that 14-year-old boy should have been in school somewhere when he was shot. But I'm here to defend law enforcement and also asking the city, our nonprofit worked hard on Teen Carefree. We've worked hard in the city with the Gun Locks, we have an event coming up next Thursday. I would ask the city if they would put it on their Facebook page to let people know about the event in Unity Park for the 19th. Also, I was asking the city as well to help us. I feel that the gentleman who did the crime at Olive Garden, including the gentleman who did the crime at Greenwood Ridge, although he's taking his own life, if you have something in front of you saying, put down the guns or something, whatever it may be, that can change the mindset of an individual and on their way to do anything wrong. And I ask you to continue to pray for the gentleman who's still living, that's in critical condition from the shooting at Olive Garden, as well as pray for the woman, as well as pray for those other two women who were shot at Garden Ridge and the two people, one at Jamestown and one at Berkeley Apartments. But we must keep the city of Greenville safe. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Okay, Ms. Arlie Green.
Hello, everyone. My name is Arlie Green. I'm a public affairs specialist of the Office of Disaster Recovery, Resilience, Operational Ease of the U.S. Maldesters of Administration. I'm here today to announce the reopening of the deadline for to apply for resources for Hurricane Helena. During the time when the storm took place, it was a lot going on with the election, which deterred a lot of people from applying. So we brought it back and we extended the deadline to April 27th, 2025 for physical damages and for economic injury, June 30th, 2025. Now for the physical damage, you must, to be eligible, you must have had damage to your home or business. And for the economic injury, you do not have to have any physical damages. The damages comes from loss of revenue or that your business is not prospering as it was at this time last year. We have great interest rates, we have good incentives, and you may apply for these programs at disasters, SBA disasters/loans, or you may call the 1-800 number 1-800-659-2955. Again, thank you for letting me come and present this program and hopefully we can get some help to the people who were survivor of Hurricane Helena. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Green, and hopefully, do you have flyers you could give to our staff or?
Yes, I sent over a digital email, but I do have some on hand that I can leave out in.
You have the email? Okay, we will share it with community development and so you can spread it with the community. And if anybody else, it'll probably be on, I guess, could we put it on our announcements? Because that's a wonderful thing if we have, because a lot of people had a lot of damage in Greenville, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Ms. Green.
Thank you.
We do appreciate.
Thank you.
Your bringing this to our attention. Anybody have any questions there? Okay, if not, we will move forward. We have a presentation. We have any presentations? Okay, no. Okay. All right. Courts and commissions, do we have any? Okay. All right. So we'll go to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved properly second. Clerk call her up.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Green. Gibson, sorry.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Yes, whatever. Aye. Yes, sir.
Yes, whatever, okay.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Fleming.
Aye. Okay, item is passed. Please forgive us, but we've been sitting for a long time. So, yeah, et cetera. We'll go now to our new business first reading. Item 15A?
Yes, ma'am. An ordinance to annex approximately 7.78 acres of real property on Dallas Road and to provide the zoning designation of RNC.
Okay.
So moved. Get it in.
Oh. You moved, okay, is this?
Second.
Okay, go right ahead.
Yes, Mayor Protem and Council, good evening. This is an annexation and a rezoning of about, close to eight acres, if you count the right-of-way on Dallas Road. And we are proposing neighborhood district scale. As you know, we are trying hard to get missing middle housing in the city and we recommended approval to Planning Commission. We felt like this was a good location for additional missing middle housing that neighborhood scale and I will be glad to take any questions.
The Planning Commission voted to deny, right?
Correct. Six to zero.
And why? What were the reasons for their?
Well, they talked a lot about this area, but heard Ms. Blickel's presentation and Blickel, excuse me, and they noted the single-family house next door. In looking at the area, it is a mix. In the 500 block of Dallas Road, there's a duplex that's existing at 555, just down the road, but it is a mix of housing types. And when the Stanley Martin Home Development to the north was permitted, they had to put in a stub in road in anticipation of future development to connect to this area.
Was denial driven by the annexation or the zoning?
They are not weighing in on the annexation, just council is, so it was just the rezoning.
Okay.
Yeah, I listened to the PC hearing this afternoon. Ms. Blickel, am I saying that right?
Blickel.
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 Was it you that spoke at the PC? I was listening to a recording tape on it. Okay, yeah, I, you know, I fully recognize we need all housing types, but at some point, I just, you know, this one, the heartburn that it gave the PC was it is encroachment on single-family housing neighborhood.
Yeah.
And, you know, in its current state, as it, I'm fully supportive of the annexation, just not supportive of the zoning as gentle density there. It's currently, you know, single-family homes on a good bit of property. They picked that lifestyle, they picked it the way it was, and it just seems like, you know, it doesn't sound like protecting neighborhoods if we do this kind of annexation on this. When we annex, to me, it should be kept as the same as it was and the RNC doesn't do that, but Councilmember Brazington.
Yeah, I've got a sufficient level of concern to not be able to support what's before us today. I would certainly be supportive of tabling to a future meeting for further consideration.
Is the zoning and annexation in front of us today?
Yes, both are.
Is there?
And that's what went before the PC.
Is there any way to split that?
I mean, if we annex something, we have to assign it a zone in our code, so it's zoned something in the county code right now?
That's right. Thank you. That's exactly right. All right, so we can't annex something without zoning?
Without the current zoning, that it has to be named, right?
That's right. Proposing RNC for the 100-foot building width so that they can have townhomes.
One option was if it wasn't the RNC, so the RNC gives it a 100-foot width.
That's right.
Facade limit. If you don't have that, you had to split it into townhomes that are doubles, double, double, double. You know, I just look at it as single-family, we're, you know, we'd like to annex it, we'd very much welcome them into the city, but to go to a townhome model on this, you know, bookended by single-family makes no sense to me.
Do we, do we run the risk if we don't annex it? Do we run the risk of this land being vulnerable to being developed regardless?
Yes, I think with the development pressures that Greenville's experiencing, something will happen there.
Do you have the color coding map that shows all the development zoning around that that's in the city limit?
We should have that.
It's in the, I think it's in the PC packet. Do you know the one I'm talking about?
Yes, the zoning map.
Mm-hmm. It's not here. It's the one, so, sorry, just to the, I don't know if that's north. Northwest of it is townhomes. So these two parcels are getting townhomes right here, massive subdivision here, and they're single-family houses.
Mm-hmm.
The new subdivision is 312 single-family homes.
Is that, can you pull up that slide?
And then 171 townhomes.
Okay.
What? Say it again.
The Bridgeport Estates Development that's already been permitted has townhomes in it, so 171 townhomes and 312 single-family homes. So this will connect with the stub out.
So. I know, I'm asked this another way. I guess my concern is that if we don't, I understand the zoning and I'm on board with that. My concern, maybe unfounded, is that if we don't annex this. The county will do it. The county will do it. Well, the county will just go ahead and just, and let them do it. And so I'm just wondering if there's a way perhaps that you can annex this with a placeholder on it.
What's the? We're owning the county right now.
Can we?
It's RS Residential Suburban District, which is.
It's RS right now?
Yes, single-family homes.
So county would have to rezone it to allow what you're saying, if we didn't annex.
Can we amend the application to change the zoning?
Yes, I think you can, but you would have to send it back to Planning Commission for their review and recommendation and then it would have to come back to you.
Okay.
And the developer, so the developer could go, stop me if I'm wrong, but the developer could go back to the PC with a different zoning application because it's, the one-year rule doesn't stand, right? But the fact of the matter is the developer would have to agree to wanna be applying for that.
No, I think what she's saying is that we could make the amendment, send it back to Planning Commission on our own. The developer would not have to make, and then certainly the developer will be able to be heard at Planning Commission as to whether or not they agreed with what our, but Planning Commission would decide based upon that whether or not they accepted our change.
But in the Planning Commission, wasn't there some discussion of that, that this is what the developer wanted and?
Well, the developer is here, so I'd like to call them up.
Yeah, that'd be great.
This is Sam Teddy with Stanley Martin Homes.
Okay.
Same.
Good afternoon, everyone. Sam Teddy, 133 Silver Hill Lane, Greenville, South Carolina. We are open to amending the zoning. There's heartburn over the 100-foot building width. We are open to changing that. I mean, we've discussed with Austin going to RNA, which would limit that, would also limit the height to two and a half stories. You know, we are open to having that consideration as well.
Can we not, I mean, have we not similarly just reassigned an item to Plan Commission for its careful review and consideration?
We have.
Doesn't have to be tabled to do that?
No, you could vote tonight to send it back, which is what I think we did with Adam's Place a few years ago.
Yes, and that's what we did with woven as well. So is that a better option than saying, hey, let's carry this, let's table this just till next meeting, give staff an opportunity to talk to the developer and see if there's some, and the neighbors, and to see if there's some type of, and then, and then in two weeks, kick it back to planning with the recommendation? Or do you just kick it back to planning? What'd be most efficient?
I think that keep the process moving the most efficient is to kick it back to Planning Commission.
Okay. And if we kicked it back to Planning Commission and we wanted them to explore the zoning issue, what specific, what specific language would we need to use in order to get that done?
If I recall during the woven, you gave them specific items that you wanted them to discuss and review as part of sending it back to them for review. So in this case, what I'm hearing from council thus far is that you're not comfortable with the current zoning designation that has been put forward and you would like them to go back and review the zoning designation for something more appropriate before it comes back to you for consideration.
Second.
I think I just heard Will make that motion.
It's been moved improperly.
I have another question. Have you closed on these parcels? Y'all, y'all own those parcels?
No, we have not closed on these.
Oh, you don't own them? Hmm. Okay.
So Will, was that a motion?
If I could recite perfectly, I will, I will share with colleagues on council, I would very much support that move. I think we wanna move efficiently but wisely and if there's not, right, if there's not existing support for a zoning now from Planning Commission or council, I can say I'm not prepared to offer a rezoning alternative, so.
I'm gonna assume you made the motion of what she said and I'm gonna second that motion.
I mean, procedurally, if that, if that pleases all the people it can please, great. But I support what she said.
I said.
I would, I would ask that planning look at zoning consistent with the neighbors, which is single-family residential, which may not make it the product you wanna buy. I get it.
So if our clerk will allow a relayed motion as presented, then potentially second and we can proceed.
Second.
The motion has been relayed and second, et cetera. And so now the clerk will call the roll.
Okay, and this is a motion to return back to the Planning Commission.
Yes.
And to have them review the zoning designation consistent with the neighbors before returning it to City Council.
Correct.
Right, yes.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Fleming.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
The motion has passed as been reversed to go to item, the next item. 15B.
An ordinance to accept an appropriate appropriation of $552,314 in contributions for the construction of the new inclusive playground in Cleveland Park and to appropriate an additional $200,000 in hospitality tax funds for the construction of the new inclusive playground in Cleveland Park.
So moved.
Second.
Moving properly second. We, go ahead.
All right, good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. The ordinance tonight in front of you is to appropriate the remaining contributions. We're excited about this project. Playground and surrounding park area are currently under construction. If you have seen already, our playground contractor is working on the shade footers. We had a little bit of a setback there a few weeks ago, but they're, they're moving along. We should see some, those things finished in the next couple of weeks. Our general contractor started sewer work for the new restroom last week and we should see the new restroom going up in, in March. Right, as of right now, we're looking at a late June ribbon cutting for the new playground.
Awesome. Any questions? Okay, clerk caller roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Fleming.
Aye. Item passed. 15B. Oh, 16A, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am. New man.
Yeah.
New Business Resolution 16A, a resolution to adopt in principle the Greenville Zoo Strategic Plan and Master Facilities Plan.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Any questions? Or discussion?
Oh.
Go ahead.
I don't have a presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions or give more details.
What did I say? Question?
Yep.
I don't have anything other than I'm just really excited about this and it's a great opportunity and I think there's a lot of things that the city and the zoo that we all do that provides joy and to our citizens and I think this is one of those, one of those opportunities. Really appreciate your leadership, appreciate the foundation's leadership, our staff leadership on, on really coming a long way in the last five years and just really appreciate that. Obviously, I'm very excited about lots of things, including the carousel opportunity.
I knew the word carousel was gonna get in there and I appreciate it. I'm as jazzed about it as you are, believe me.
Yeah, and I'll.
The charges for the carousel for the councilman.
Free rides for council.
You've done a marvelous job. You've done a marvelous job. I do want to add that, et cetera. We thank you. Dorothy, you had something you want to say?
I do. So one thing, you know I love action items and the task lists at the end of these strategic plans, and this has a good layout of action items. Some are budget-driven, some aren't. Madam City Manager, as we get the budget presented to us in the next several months, I would love to see how budget items that tie to the zoo tie to the, the action plans listed in this. In other words, this is a five-year-long view, and, you know, it begins with some, you know, some, some steps, and when we are making budgeting decisions that tie directly to that plan that we are about to adopt, you know, I hope you'll highlight it. I also would be remiss if I didn't recognize Lindsay from the Zoo Foundation. Stand up, please, Lindsay, who's here, and Diana, who's helping her. Oh, and I didn't even see you, Gail. Y'all stand up. All you Zoo Foundation people, stand up. So the Zoo Foundation has a charge. They know they're marching orders on fundraising. I encourage everybody to come to the Green Tide Gala, April 11th. Do I have that right? And just, are you, are you coming?
And the theme is green.
Or an animal print. Maybe I'll be alone again. So, great job, Bill. I love the plan. I love the action items. I love you holding us accountable to act on those action items and fund them. Thank you.
Thank, thank you all for your support of the zoo. I, I really do appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. This is a resolution. All of the, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right. Item passes. Next item. Is that it? Our City Manager.
Good evening. Thank you so much. I have just a couple of staff updates for you that I wanted to talk about tonight. I'm not sure if we have a couple of photos, but first I wanted to recognize our PRT team for the tremendous effort that they had this weekend to support the SEC. As you all heard earlier from Heath Diller during your work session, it was a record-breaking weekend for several things, but look at our great PRT team here that led our downtown dribble on Saturday morning. They do such a great job, and the photos were just, it was just a wonderful day for, for this on Saturday, and I think everyone had a really great time, and it's one of the many things that just show what a great job that our city staff does to support the